Called to order this meeting the Pasadena Independent School District Board of Trustees in regular session on Tuesday, April 22, 2025, in the boardroom of the Administration Building, 3920 Mickey Gilly Boulevard, Pasadena, Texas at 5:30 PM. Board members present, Mr. Kenny Fernandez, Ms. Crystal Davala, Ms. Paola Gonzalez, Marshall Kendrick, Nelda Sullivan, and me, K.C. Phelan. There are no board members absent. Left the record indicate that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting is duly called, and that notice of this meeting was posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Ladies and gentlemen, if you'll please stand. The invocation and presentation of colors by San Raben High School, Army, JROTC, and remain standing for the pledges.
Sorry. Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening with hearts full of gratitude and reverence. We thank you for your constant presence and the many blessings you've poured out over the district, our community, and our schools. Lord, we are especially thankful for each person gathered here tonight, those who serve, those who lead, and those who support the mission of the Pasadena ISD. Thank you for the dedication and care that each board member, educator, and staff member brings to their work. Tonight, we give you special thanks for our brand-new superintendent. We celebrate this exciting new chapter and lift her up as you and she lead us into the future. May this, her first official board meeting, be filled with unity, wisdom, and purpose. Father, we ask you your grace and protection over this meeting and over our entire district. Guide our thoughts and decisions so that they may be pleasing to your sight. Help us lead with integrity, compassion, vision, and always mindful of what is best for our students, teachers, and staff. You have entrusted us to your care. May everything we do bring you glory, and may the impact of our work reach far beyond this room, touching lives and shaping futures for generations to come. It says in Jesus' holy name that we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
This to public comments according to policy BED local relates to items on the open session portion of the agenda. This portion of public comments is limited to speakers who are addressing items listed on the open session portion of the agenda for this meeting. We ask that all speakers refrain from using profane or vulgar language. Complaints about an individual, students, and/or employees should seek resolution through the district's grievance process outlining the applicable Pasadena ISD board policy, DGBA, FNG, or GF. Along those lines, we ask that speakers respect the privacy rights of others and, in doing so, refrain from naming employees and/or students during the public comments portion of the agenda. Titles may be used instead. This admonishment goes for positive or negative remarks. Each person will be limited to a maximum of three minutes. Mr. Fernandez has the time and will indicate when you have one minute left and when your time has expired. We have one speaker, Ms. Sonia Emmons. As a reminder, these are proximity microphones, so you're going to need to get close to them for them to be recorded. Either one, whichever is more comfortable for you. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. No problems.
Okay, how's that? Good. All right, thank you. Yes, new superintendent, welcome. Board, thank you for letting me be here, and thank y'all for being here. Audience, thank you for being here, being involved. And my coworkers, thank you. My name is Sonia Emmons. I am a special needs bus driver with Pasadena ISD. I thought it was very fitting for me to come and speak today to the board and the audience with it being Bus Driver Appreciation Week. And just to give you a little bit of information, we come to work, no matter what the weather is, as long as we're open, we show up. We may bring two or three different sets of clothing to wear throughout the day because it goes from very cold, wet, raining, drenched. You know, so we really come prepared, and, you know, we're professionals. We have our CDL. And with our CDL, we have a lot of different little rules that we have to follow other than everybody else. One, we can drive a dump truck. We can drive a garbage truck. But also, there's no way of us getting out of a ticket other than hiring an attorney. So we have to be extremely careful in our vehicle and on the bus. I'm very proud of all of our drivers that we have and our, let's see, the new title, personal care service bus aide, previously known as monitors, that are on the bus for our special needs students. In a perfect world, we would already have our new transportation facility built. It was approved in the bond of 2017. It's projected to be completed 2026. There was logistic issues. We understand that. We're good with it. We are just so ready for the new facility to be open. We are extremely ready for it. In addition to that, in a perfect world, we would, on the pay, be having a lot more money than we have now, especially for our aides and such. But with everything in the climate that's going on in the world, with the vouchers and such, we're going to be the best professionals that we can. We are the first people the students see in the morning, the last. We're friendly. We're wonderful, and thank y'all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Emmons, I think I speak for the whole board of saying thank you to all of our bus drivers for what you guys do day in and day out, and we are very appreciative of how you handle our students and getting them to and from school. So I would just like to say thank you. I know we got a little something else going on for y'all this week, but I would like to give a personal thank you to all of our bus drivers. So thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Which brings us to the budget workshop. Dr. Tamika Alfred Stevens, CFO.
As Dr. Alfred Stevens comes up to the microphone, just want to share with you, board, you do have the presentation here at the table for you. But I just want you to know, for the last several months, we've been engaged in the budget planning process for the upcoming school year. And while we know the legislature is still currently in session, we must continue to do the work that we do with our budget based on what is currently law and in place. We can't budget off of the what-ifs. So as all you know, many school districts across the state are feeling the impact of increased costs of goods and services and enrollment decline, inflation, teacher shortage. I think I could go on and on, and we're no different. We have those same struggles as other school districts across the state. With these challenges in mind, the Budget Committee has met several times, and we've discussed ways that we can reduce costs. We look at every single thing that we're purchasing to make sure that we are implementing as much cost avoidance as we can. So this evening, Dr. Alfred Stevens will share where we are in the budget planning process and answer any questions that you may have. So I'll turn it over to her so she can inform us.
Thank you, Dr. Lopez. Good evening, President Phelan, trustees, audience members. Again, I'm just going to start by quickly acknowledging that I was reading an article a few months back, and it talked about how funding for public education has decreased nearly $10 billion over the last five years. When you take into consideration that we have not had an increase in the basic allotment along with the rising cost of inflation, that has compounded to nearly $10 billion between 2020 and 2025. And so that is very significant and sizable, but we have to keep that in mind as we're also planning for this year and years beyond this upcoming school year. As Dr. Lopez already said, we're working diligently to build a budget that meets our needs while also takes into consideration the funding limitations that are currently upon us. So for today's presentation, I'm going to focus on these three areas that are noted here. I'll start with talking about a brief legislative update specifically focusing on finance, and then I'll transition into talking a little bit about our budget planning process for the 2526 school year, and then we'll close out with budget planning next steps, and of course, address and answer any questions that you all may have, okay? So at the start of the legislative session, Governor Abbott stated that there were seven emergency items that he would be focused on. Property tax relief, increasing teacher pay, and school choice was three of those seven items. So since that time, several bills have been filed and introduced into this, into the session. The last day to file a bill, I believe, was on March 14th. So there's lots of work that has, has yet to be done, and there's lots of discussions that are still happening. So I'm going to start with House Bill 2. And again, these are just some of the highlights from House Bill 2. It is an enormous bill, but I wanted to bring to the forefront just some of the highlights that we have to take into consideration since there's language out there that is specifically saying certain things as we prepare for the upcoming school year. And the first is the basic allotment increase. You heard me say a moment ago that the basic allotment has not increased in several years. Well, in House Bill 2, the basic allotment is increasing, or there's proposed legislation to increase it upwards of $395. And that's significant for us because anytime there's a basic allotment increase, that automatically triggers required compensation increases. And we know when we have compensation increases, we have to be able to sustain those compensation increases. And so in the bill language as of today, 40% of our increase in state aid from one year to the next, so from this year to the upcoming year, would have to be dedicated to compensation increases. And then 75% of that 40% has to go to specific groups. Those specific groups are teachers, counselors, nurses, and librarians. Now, previously, the basic allotment increase was only supposed to be for 30% of compensation. But again, that has changed in the new bill, and it's 40%. And also, you see, there's a note there that says Amendment 1. Well, in the amendment, it added back in counselors, nurses, and librarians because that 75% was only designated for teachers specifically. So again, we have, we know that with any increase that comes, if this legislation passes, we will have to look at compensation increases in this way. The next major piece of legislation, I shouldn't say legislation, I guess area of this bill is regarding property tax relief hold harmless provisions. So in previous legislative sessions, we have been held harmless, meaning the state has provided us aid to make up for lost revenue as a result of tax rate compression, frozen levy losses, and homestead exemptions. Well, in House Bill 2, originally, those provisions were taken out, were taken out, or taken away. And so we would be losing funding because of that. But an amendment was filed, as you can see, that's noted there, to add those hold harmless provisions back in. So that is a great thing for us, so we're happy that that was taken into consideration. Also, the rising cost of special education. There is legislation there now that says that the special education allotment needs to be reviewed and overhauled, and it needs to be based on an intensity of service-based model. So we're hopeful that once all of that flesh is out, we'll be a winner in some of that because we definitely want to make certain that we have the necessary funds to support one of our most precious groups of students. Continuing with House Bill 2, again, this bill also calls for a penalty for excess INS collections. And what that simply means is that anytime you generate or we generate more money on the INS side than our actual debt payment, we would, our state aid would be reduced in that same amount. Historically, we have been able to defees or pay debt off early because of an additional, you know, a couple of million dollars that we may generate that where we may have not, we may have underprojected the total taxable values or whatnot. But in this legislation, it's saying that if you go over your projected bond payment amount for that year, your state aid would be reduced. And so that would take away the opportunity for us to be able to pay off debt, saving our taxpayers, in essence, on the long term. Also, there were increases to certain allotments, specifically the early education allotment, the transportation allotment. And originally, the bilingual education allotment and the compensatory education allotment were slated for adjustments as well as far as increases. However, that has been delayed to the second year of the biennium. So we'll see what that looks like and sounds like as this bill continues to pass through both chambers. And also, a fine arts allotment was created. So again, just highlighting some of the high points of House Bill 2. And the final highlight I'd like to recognize with House Bill 2 is funding for full-day pre-K. So we know that students getting an early start is so critical and important. We've embraced providing a full-day pre-K program, but you have to read the fine print. So in essence, what this is saying is that, hey, you know, we're going to fund full-day pre-K, but we're going to reduce compensatory education funding and the early education allotment funding to be able to fund full-day pre-K. Well, we don't want them shifting money from one place to the other. We need all of our current compensatory education funds and all of our current early education allotment funds, and we need them to fully fund full-day pre-K without shifting from one place to the other. So we will continue to monitor the language that's coming out of that bill because we know that any changes to the compensatory education allotment can greatly impact some of the decisions that we make and some of the services and programs that we provide to our students. In some ways, yes, but they have added about $7 billion over the next two years into the system. So I do want to recognize that they did add money to the system to help increase the basic allotment, but I do agree also that there is some shifting and moving around of differing allotments to make up in areas that are getting a little bit more attention, if I can say it that way. Other key legislation that I just want to high point, SB 2 and its counterpart HB 3, education savings accounts, also known as vouchers. Of course, it has already been through both chambers. SB 4, property tax, homestead exemption, that proposed legislation would increase the current homestead exemption for us from $100,000 to $140,000. And then that bill also has language that speaks to the INS state aid as well that I mentioned before. And then SB 260 and SB, I'm sorry, HB 124 would increase school safety. So again, they have made some intentional investments in school safety, but we still know that $37,000 per campus is not enough to provide a police officer. So again, another underfunded mandate, but the state has language in this current bill that would increase the current allocations. So again, these are just a couple of the many bills that are, that we are monitoring. There are several bills being, that have been filed during this legislative session. And so when we think about the financial impact, so we have been provided with revenue models that show what our projected total state aid would be, but because there are so many unknowns right now, we've been advised to look at them, but, and look at them only. We still have to plan based on what's currently in law because we know that sometimes when decisions have to be made on both sides, from the House and the Senate, there's, sometimes there's disagreements about what the bill language needs to state. And so until we have a signature or till something is passed into law, we have to plan based on what we know to be true as of today. So we'll make more informed decisions as we get more information, okay? Now, transitioning into the budget planning process, so we are continuing to identify and understand our needs as best as we can, and this includes reviewing enrollment, staffing, revenue projections, just to name a few of the targets that we're focused on. Each of these areas are critical in understanding what our projected expenses would be. And also, throughout the budget planning process, you heard Dr. Lopez mention earlier, we're looking for ways to mitigate costs as well as avoid costs, as well as find other ways to fund programs and services. Included in that is right sizing our staff. This year, we worked with a demographer to take a look at our entire district and provide us feedback, and we learned that we have a smaller cohort of students in our lower grades in comparison to our upper grade levels, specifically high school. And so what that means is that fewer children have been born over the last several years, and so fewer children are available to enroll in our school system. So we have smaller cohorts of students. Enrollment is a significant driver in state funding and planning, so we have to make the necessary adjustments as it relates to staffing, noting that we are now serving a smaller population of students. And this is just a quick graph to kind of show you what our trends have looked like since the 2018-19 school year and what we're forecasting going forward. Also, as we plan, we monitor our tax base. At this time, we are projecting a 2% tax base increase, but we will not have our certified estimates until the end of this month. And once we have those certified estimates, we will adjust our revenue projections accordingly. Taxable values are another significant part of our budget because they directly impact revenue projections and how we forecast our revenue. You'll see here on the screen that our taxable values have, you know, gone up and down a little bit from, since 2021, but mostly up, as you can see there. And our maintenance and operations tax rates over the last five years are noted there, and then you can also see what our enrollment has been in those years as well. Again, from a budget planning process, we have allocated our campuses, we have determined what our campus allocations are going to be, but we have not finalized what our department budgets are going to be. Again, with the current legislation, the way it is, we want to make certain that we understand our needs and we don't underanticipate nor overanticipate what the needs are of our district. We know that the needs are great, but we also recognize that we have limited funding to support those needs, and we want to make certain we're prioritizing our students first, our classroom instructional expenses first, and then, of course, you know, everything else becomes a secondary priority and whatnot. But all are important, needless to say. As far as next steps, so we will continue to utilize our budget planning calendar, and as more information becomes available during this legislative session, we will use that to guide and inform our decision-making. We will also have another budget workshop next month, and we hope to have a draft of our 2526 budget because we know that the legislative session should be wrapping up soon. I know June is sign and die, but there are a lot of committee meetings and decisions that will be made during the month of May. As a reminder, this year, our budget fiscal year is July 1st through June 30th. So by law, our trustees, you all, is it important for us to have a budget in place before July 1st by law? And the three budgets that are required to be adopted are the General Operating Budget, Nutrition Services, and Debt Services. Those three budgets are required to be in place before the start of the new fiscal year. And if everything goes as planned, we hope that we will be able to bring forth a budget that meets our needs at the June 24th meeting of the trustees. At this time, I'll pause and answer any questions that you all may have.
Any questions? We have a lot of statements to make about state legislation.
I'll listen.
We got to keep it clean so we won't see them.
Right after this.
Sounds good.
You guys have done a great job, and we know that you're going to continue to do diligence for these kids. It's very tough having to put a budget together when you have a lot of unknowns.
I don't disagree.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I understand how trying it is.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan.
Outstanding job, and we are very grateful for you. Thank you.
Thank you. And before I go to my seat, I'd be remiss if I did not mention my team. There's, I am supported by some amazing leaders, and if, I just want to take a moment of privilege, if you all would stand. I don't want to have to call you by name, so don't act like you're not a part of the team. Thank you. Derek, 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 there we go.
There we go.
I didn't want to leave him out, but thank you all for being here. They are truly amazing, and they have really done a great job of keeping me in line and making certain that I have good information to share with you all in our community. So I appreciate each of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Good presentation.
Talking about our budget and for the last 15-plus years, how our district has been rewarded for the way they handle their budget, and it's a tribute to you and your leadership and your hard-working team, and we do appreciate all and then some.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. Thank you. We're going to move on to policy updates presented by Sandra Hoon, Esquire.
Hello, good afternoon. So I'm just going to start with, these are the policies that we're going to go over. You should have your notebook with you so for easy access to the information. The first policy we're going to address is CAA Local, and this policy is under the fiscal management goals and objectives and financial ethics. So this policy deals with rules regarding federal grants. And so recently, the Code of Federal Register was revised to include information concerning federal grants. And as it applies to us, you'll see on page six, there has been a revision. So in order to align our local policy with the text of the Federal Register and the changes that were made, there's changes to the federal awards disclosure. And as you can see, in blue is the language that has been added. And as you can see, they have added additional information which indicates that in connection with federal awards, if there is any type of disclosure that needs to be made, it has to be done promptly. So they took out in a timely manner and changed that to promptly. It must be in writing, and they also indicated whenever a report needs to be made, whenever the district has credible evidence of the commission of a violation of federal criminal law, including fraud, and they added the word conflict of interest. So that would also require a report when there is what we conceive to be a conflict of interest and/or bribery, gratuity violations, that they took out the word could potentially affect, and they added, which would be a violation found in federal law. And as you can see, they also took out the word designate throughout the policy, and the reason for that is that they have, the superintendent would be the responsible party, and they don't want these areas, these sections, to be designated to other individuals. So the superintendent would remain as a responsible party. You'll see that on page six, three of four of the policy, and then earlier on at the beginning of the policy under response. You'll see that those changes were made. The next policy is CB. And this policy concerns the investment of public funds. And in this policy, what we are addressing is that we want to make sure that anyone that handles any type of district funds or investment, whether they be a broker or a business representative, must submit required business documents. And if you look on page 14, you can scroll down there, you'll see where the change has been made. And the requirement here is that the representative or brokers must be registered with the state of Texas. of Texas State Security Board, must have membership in the Security Investors Protection Corporation, must be in good standing with the Financial Industry Regulatory Authority, and also shall be registered and good standing with the Municipal Securities Rulemaking Board. So whenever we're dealing with anyone that we're going to be working with that may invest our funds, we will be doing our due diligence, which we already do, but this is an added requirement that we make sure that they are registered with these authorities here. Moving on to CE Local. This is a revision that we're putting in, and it's just a very simple change that you'll find on page 22 at the beginning. We have changed our fiscal year, so we are, this policy just confirms that in policy, the district shall operate their fiscal year beginning on July 1st and ending on June 30th. So this is just confirming and making sure that we have that in policy. Moving on to CFC Local. This policy was deleted. This was at one time directed to our internal auditor. And you'll see here, this is just a deletion as I scroll through. So since we do no longer have an internal auditor, this policy would no longer apply to us. However, we still have CFC Legal. This is the local that's being deleted. We still have CFC Local, Legal, which addresses our responsibilities for our annual audits and our responsibilities to make sure that we're complying with all the requirements. So that hasn't changed. That is still in policy. If at some time we end up getting a new internal auditor, that we could go back and add the local provision at that point.
One time at internal auditors, that audited Booster Club money and things like this to make sure, and also money taken in by the schools. Is that still in effect?
I believe that they do have that at the campuses. This is the internal auditor that reports directly to the board. And so it's a little bit different, but I know that they do have, I have heard that they have some safeguards in the campus where they do auditing. I know probably Tamika knows a little bit more about that than I do, but I am familiar with the checks and balances that they have in place. And I do review the contracts also, so I'm, you know, go back and double check to make sure that all that is being looked at. So moving on to CQC. So this is a new policy, and so the, we did have a House bill that 3489 that passed, where it said that the districts now should adopt a model health and safety guidelines for the use of digital devices in schools. And what TEA and Health and Human Services Commission, they put a model policy in place, some guidelines for us to follow. So this is just a new policy, and it just says that we need to make sure that we're following the model policy developed by TEA and Health and Human Services Commission. However, we can adjust it to our district needs. And as you can see here, the superintendent will be developing regulations to implement the guidelines. So if we've already gotten to that point, we're probably about 80% there. So once we get those regulations, I'm sure Dr. Lopez will share them with the group. Moving on to CY Local. This policy clarifies when the district, in what circumstances the district's intellectual property may be used and where ownership of the intellectual property lies when a district employee creates material. And it also outlines when can a district use intellectual property in their performances. And you'll see here, what has been the case, but it's just bolstered with the language under intellectual property on that first section. You know, what we know and remains true is that anyone that performs work for the district, any intellectual property will remain the property of the district. So that would include any work that is completed by contractors or employees. That has not changed. If we look scrolling down to page 39, you'll see the section where there are some exceptions when we can use intellectual or copyrighted material. And that would include if we have a play or a performance, a musical performance or audio or visual performance. And you'll see that there are some criteria that are outlined there that are new. You can use the material as part of a teaching and directly related to a curriculum during a face-to-face teaching activity, when viewed in a classroom or designated place of instruction, when a lawfully made copy or authorized, or there's, or authorized access by the author. So this just clarifies this policy. On to DH Local. This policy is, it just expands what we consider the use of nicotine products or tobacco products or vaping products. And it's under DH Local, so it's related to employees. And if you look down at the policy, you'll see that, let's see here, there's a bigger, going down to page 48 is where the bulk of the changes are. And it just emphasizes that there is a prohibition from possessing or using any type of tobacco product, e-cigarettes, or electronic vaping products while on campus in a district vehicle or attending an off-campus related activity. We have this for the students, and this really is just applicable now. We're making it clear that it's applicable to also employees. On to EHB. So this, this policy just is revised to align with changes to the Administrative Code addressing dyslexia and related disorders. And basically, it's just making sure that we have this information in all our handbooks, that we've made any, updated our handbooks regarding provisions of dyslexia or related disorders, and also that we have the references to the requirement of the Student Admission and Review Dismissal Committee, which are the ARD meetings. Moving on to FFG. This is a fairly new change, but regarding reporting child abuse. And if you look on, the bulk of it is going to be on page 74. And what this policy addresses is that now the new requirements are, is when you make a report of child abuse, you have to identify yourself and you also have to provide your address. And it can be, if it's a teacher, they would provide their school address. The report itself remains confidential, but unlike in the past, they are not accepting anonymous reports. They do want the name to be attached, the reporter's name to be attached to the complaint. So that is, that is a change in the law. And then we're moving on to GKA. Revisions to this policy are adding language, again prohibiting electronic vaping devices on district property. As you can see, this is in the G series. So that is, the G series is going to apply to the community. So we're making sure that the use of those similar things, as we talked about, the vaping applies to members of the community when they are visiting at our school. Yes, any district property, including district vehicles or any school-related activity. So, and there is a provision where, you know, we can exclude or ask, you know, someone to either, I don't, I don't know if people call it smoking anymore because it's a bunch of different devices, but, you know, draw their attention and let them know that it is prohibited at school-related events. Believe that covers all of them. We did have one where, EIE, where there would be no action, as we're not bringing that one forward today. We will bring it forward in May. Okay, any questions? Thank you.
That was a lot of work you put into that.
A lot of work.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
We're going to adjournment to closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.071, 551.072, 551.074, and 551.076. We will reconvene in open session at 7:00 PM. We're going to reconvene in open session at 7:21 PM, 7:21 PM. We have special recognition. Unbeknownst to Dr. Lopez, I get to start first. Yeah, yours doesn't say this.
Oh, I know. It's not on my script.
I'd like to take a moment to honor our new superintendent of schools, Dr. Tony Lopez. This is her first official board meeting as superintendent. Dr. Lopez, we'd like to present you with a special gift. This flag was flown over our district on our first official day as superintendent, symbolizing the legacy of excellence established and the beginning of a new chapter in our journey. It also represents our shared values, our dedication to our student, and our commitment to ensuring that our schools continue to provide high-quality education and support for all students. Thank you, Dr. Lopez. We look forward to working together to achieve great things for our community. Now you.
Well, that was an honor that I was not expecting. And so everybody got to be here tonight and have this packed house. So thank you for being here and for allowing me for this to be my first board meeting and with a packed house. So tonight, it's a packed house because we've got some really good things going on, and we're going to recognize some really special students. And so we're excited to recognize this year's Vanguard Community Service Award recipients. The Vanguard Award was created years ago to honor high school seniors who have dedicated hours of volunteer work to serve the Pasadena area. Whether that involved volunteering time, actions, or talent, these students have made a huge positive impact on this community. And we are so thankful for their outstanding volunteer service. So we would like to share a short video created by our communication team that showcases these outstanding students and explores what motivates them to volunteer in their community.
Volunteering has helped me grow into a better, kinder, and more responsible person.
When I volunteer, I'm able to make those connections with others, hear stories, relate, and serve.
It's shown me how helping others can cause true, permanent change.
Being able to volunteer not only my time, but my knowledge to the youth and seeing them grow is an indescribable feeling.
Volunteering through Girl Scouts has shaped my sense of responsibility and community involvement.
Most of my community service involved interacting with students at a nonprofit summer camp.
I've been especially involved in Pasadena FFA chapter since my freshman year.
I have worked with all types of people in our community, from little kids to the elderly.
Working with children taught me patience, empathy, and importance of advocacy.
From conducting free blood pressure checks at Old Perilous Farmers Market to walking dogs at the Pasadena Animal Shelter.
Community involvement creates a network of mutual support, enriching lives on both sides.
This has bolstered my confidence and clarified my aspirations to pursue a career that involves interacting and connecting with people.
When we unite our efforts, we can overcome obstacles and achieve great things together.
These experiences have profoundly influenced my approach to leadership roles in both my community and school.
It has taught me how to be more patient with others and have more self-confidence.
It has opened my eyes to my community. Working with my peers helps me better understand what the real definition of teamwork is.
I developed essential abilities like problem solving and quick thinking.
It makes me a better leader and a follower.
Teaching me the value of empathy, teamwork, and selflessness.
It has helped me become an even better person for my community.
By seeing the impact and faces of gratitude, I realized volunteering had made a difference in the lives of those around me, including my own.
Seeing the direct impact of service has inspired me to remain engaged in meaningful long-term change.
It has allowed me to open up more and not be afraid to meet new people because you never know what opportunities may come about.
This realization shades my desire to put some good back into the community, no matter what I do.
It has made me more vocal when I talk to my elders.
If it wasn't for my experiences with helping and volunteering my time, I wouldn't be where I am today.
These experiences have enhanced my leadership skills and reinforced my commitment to giving back to my community.
Volunteering has made me understand how important it is to serve our community, an activity that I will continue to do in the future.
Volunteering has allowed me to step out of my comfort zone and discover something
About you guys, but for me, that gave me chills. And to be actually in the room with this caliber of student, I feel very honored because wow, they're certainly are amazing. So now we're going to turn the microphone over to our school representatives to start off our 2025 Vanguard students from their, from each high school. We're going to start with Gabriel Munoz from Dobie High School.
I'm honored to present this year's Vanguard students from Dobie High School, starting with Diana Baena Rodriguez. Unfortunately, she wasn't able to attend. Ms. Kimberly Boyd, who will present the students from Lewis, CTHS.
I am delighted to present the Vanguard students from CTHS, Alexandra Deleon. Juliana Ontiveros. Juliana Sandoval. And Jennifer Rose Torres. Thank you, CTHS Vanguard students. And now I'll turn the microphone over to Maria Castaneda with Pasadena High School.
This year's Pasadena High School Vanguard students are Natalia Almontes. Carlos Damian Cordova. Jasmine Ruiz. Priana Trevino. Diana Trujillo. Congratulations to all the Pasadena High Vanguard students.
I'm excited to present the Vanguard students from Pasadena Memorial High School. Tiffany K. Cole. Jeremiah Nicholas Isom. Jocelyn Sierra Howdige. Nina. Nina Nunley. Aleah Leanne Robles. Congratulations to this year's Pasadena Memorial High School Vanguard students. And now, I would like to turn over the microphone to Joshua Castro.
At this time, I would like to present the Sam Rayburn Vanguard Award recipients. First, we have Edwin Osorio. Edwin is not able to make it with us this evening. So I'll go to the next one. Bella Mae Rocha. Daniela Rodriguez. Also unable to make it this evening, Yahir Hernandez Rodriguez. Stephanie Anne Torres. Next, we have South Houston High School. And so I would like to ask Michelle Malvo to come to the microphone.
I'm out to recognize. I am proud to recognize this year's South Houston High School Vanguard recipients. Giselle Agurtu. Debora Gaitu. Tantruk Nguyen. Kelly Kamlish Kumar Patel. And Chelsea Robertson. Thank you to our South Houston High Vanguard students and to all this year's Vanguard recipients for your contributions to the community. A few closing thoughts from Dr. Tony Lopez. So thank you again for being here. And I would like to highlight our community sponsors of Chevron Pasadena Refinery, Raising Canes, and the Pasadena ISD Education Foundation for recognizing the importance of giving back and teaching our students that valuable skill. And so thank you for your continued support for this Vanguard students.
And now, if parents and those who are here to see the Vanguard students, if you want to slip out, we're going to give you a few minutes to slip out, so you don't have to stick around for the boring part of the meeting.
What does that mean?
I don't know. It's in the script.
I thought that's why they call it a board meeting.
They actually have a little reception.
Eating again?
Plenty of seats up front if you want to come sit down.
I know. No. I hope I learned to control myself again after giving birth.
Welcome. Come, please. Join us.
Been eating less. He's anxious. Exactly. I'm like, no, I'm the only one gaining weight.
Okay, that takes us to the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion? Motion by Ms. Sullivan.
Second.
Second by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of administrative personnel.
Mr. President, I move that we approve addenda items A through E.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Gonzalez, second by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Gonzalez, take it away.
So Ms. Christina Cross. Position of Assistant Principal at Bondi Intermediate. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Mr. Jarrell Hudson. Mr. Hudson has been approved for the position of Assistant Principal at May Smith Elementary School. I see you brought family, friends.
Awesome.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Mr. Patrick Longstreet. Mr. Longstreet has been approved for the position of Director of Athletics. Congratulations. Position of Principal at Genoa Elementary School. Congratulations. Introduce your family, please.
Wow. I loved it.
Taking a solid dinner, right?
He's tipping out.
Smart man.
Fair point.
Touche.
Ms. Jennifer Stewart. Already wearing that red. So she has been approved for the position of Principal at Southeastern High School.
Excellent. Outstanding. Congratulations to everyone. We're proud. We can't wait to see the new effects you have on our school district and on our new campuses. And with that, if you would like to slip out, we will allow you to slip out.
Hey, beautiful family. Hey, put it on him. Put it on him. Good to see you. Good to see you.
How you doing?
Okay, well, tell her I said hello to you.
Probably from the photo in the mailroom.
I thought he said Dobie. She said him with Dobie.
Same colors.
Oh, I guess it makes sense. You would know. You really do know everything, Nolan. I'm telling you.
All right.
Are you just changing everything? I like it.
Okay.
Dave's over there cutting up.
That's good. That's good. All right, we're going to get back to business.
And everybody gets quiet because we raise our hand.
Bobby Sevadra over there. I love it. Chief.
Yeah, right, right, right.
Okay, consideration possible approval of department reorganization and employee reclassification. Motion by Ms. Sullivan, second by Ms. Gonzalez. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of the reclassification of ACE Family Engagement Specialist A01 to ACE Program Specialist E06 for the 2024-2025 school year.
We'll move.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick, second by Ms. Sullivan. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Certified Personnel for 2024-2025 School Year is for information only. Certified Personnel for 2025-2026 School Year for information only. Support Personnel for 2024-2025 School Year for information only, which brings us to the educational section. Facilities and Operations Spotlight presented by Mr. Kevin Foronoff, Associate Superintendent of Facilities and Construction. Take it away, Kevin.
Kevin and our behind-the-scenes team over there, we love those guys.
Yes, I like it. Well, good evening, Dr. Lopez, President Phelan, Board Trustees. I appreciate the opportunity to spotlight a few of our incredible departments that work hard to provide valuable services to our district every single day. Transportation, Operations, Warehouse, Buildings and Grounds, and our Maintenance Department represent over 1,000 employees, employees that always rise to the occasion and go above and beyond to meet the needs of our district. No matter what the situation, at any time, day or night, we can always count on them to respond and with a positive and humble attitude of servanthood. As Mr. Fernandez has mentioned before in a previous board meeting, our success is credited to a great team, which I have had the honor to, honor and privilege to supervise for many years. And so with that, I'd like to take my opportunity to introduce some of the team tonight in the order that they're going to present. Mr. Robert Stock, Director of Transportation. Mr. Robert Sevadra, Director of Operations, Warehouse, Buildings and Grounds. And Mr. Tom Douglas, Director of Maintenance. Robert?
I really thought all those people were here for us, but I guess not. Kevin said we have to spotlight a department, so I have 30 slides. He said we have 30 slides in 30 minutes, so just kidding.
Skip the commercials.
What'd you say?
Skip the commercials.
That's it. I'll skip the commercials. So I would like to spotlight the Transportation Department, and it is School Bus, our School Bus Driver Appreciation Week this week. So we do greatly appreciate our, both our drivers, our monitors, our technicians as well. And I don't know if this is on. If not, I'll just click on the mouse. All right. So first of all, I'll just talk about the things that we do. We run about 200 routes a day. They all cover, we cover three to four tiers for each route. We cover 63 Pasadena ISD campuses. We run routes to San Jacinto College, both Central and South. We run out-of-district buses to the out-of-district special education programs. We service about 20,000 students a day. We have, we run about 6,000 extra trips a year. That includes field trips, athletics, fine arts, academic competitions. We run the buses about 2.1 million miles a year, but that's not all we do. We also service all the white fleet, as well as the buses. 350 buses in our fleet. We have about 500 white fleet. That includes both police cars, maintenance vehicles, child nutrition operations, tech services, CTE. And then we service all the lawn equipment and the mowers and those types of things as well. Costs us about $7 million a year for transportation budget. Our fuel costs us about $2 million a year. Extra time and overtime to run field trips and that extra routes during the middle of the day outside of the driver's regular time. It's about $2.3 million for that. And then parts and services, about $1.3 million. So I want to talk about what's ahead, spotlighting what's coming ahead. Throughout this year, we've been piloting a program through Senovia CalAmp. It's a bus GPS system. It will tell us the bus locations. It tells us the speed the buses are going. It tells us things like maintenance, if maintenance is needed on the buses, things like that. It tells us student ridership. We started piloting with some of the schools, the student ridership program with RFID badges. We've been working with Technology Department to get the RFID badges to all the schools. There's a card reader on the bus. The kids tap the card reader, just like they would, just like maybe the kids might not, but just like you would if you're going to pay for your groceries at the grocery store or whatever. And it logs them onto the bus, it logs them off the bus. Tells us the time, location. It tells us if the kid's getting on the right bus or the wrong bus, those types of things as well. If we ever have to, God forbid, if we ever have to evacuate a school, the kids would log in and off the bus, that we would know where the, what time the kids got on, what bus they got on, and then where they got off during evacuation, to be able to run reports and that sort of thing. In case of an accident, buses get in an accident, we can run real-time reports for the schools so they know which kids were on the bus, that sort of thing, if there's ever an accident. So what else is coming ahead? We have a parent app that's coming that's part of that same program. It's called Here Comes the Bus. We're piloting that. We're getting ready to start piloting the Here Comes the Bus program with three of our schools. That also will tell the parents what time the kids got on the bus, what time the kids got off the bus, where they got on, where they got off. It will tell the parent a bus arrival ship. they got on, where they got off. It will tell the parent a bus arrival ship estimated time. And then we can also send messaging systems if we have delays, railroad, you know, we get, God forbid, if we get caught by railroad, on the railroad tracks, or if there are accidents, flooding, those types of things, we can send messages out to the parents that have subscribed to the app so they know those types of things as well. And then it'll also tell parents about bus substitution. So, and that's it for me.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Robert, before you walk away, 26,000 miracles happen every day, and that's your people.
Absolutely.
Not just because of your bus drivers, but you and everybody on your team. So on behalf of the board, we are so appreciative of what you guys do. Just keep up the good work. Y'all make, y'all make things look so awesome.
We appreciate you guys.
Good evening, everyone. This is Dr. Lopez, and everyone's at, my name is Robert Savadra, and I'm the Director of Operations, Building and Grounds, and Warehouse. Kind of a mouthful. So, our district is often referred to as a little big town. Our main goal is the upkeep and cleaning of that little big town. We don't do it alone. In our department organizationally, we have 553 folks to maintain that little big town. Operations Department is full of 471 magnificent men and women who, on a daily basis, clean, disinfect, and sanitize all the learning space in our environment. Our Building and Grounds folks, who are filled with 56 wonderful men, maintain, manicure, all the green space, 350 acres of it across the district. Our Warehouse folks, 11 to be exact, traverse this district, about 83 square miles, across four municipalities, bringing goods, services, so that the district can do their thing in the classroom. Now, our little big town, 9,800 square feet of learning space. That's huge. So we have 471 folks that do that. So if you do the math, those 471 folks are responsible for about 22,000 square feet each. That's huge. So we approach it as a zone, I think. Pasadena ISD, the average size house is about 1,800 square feet. So when you're looking at it, that breaks down to about 11 and 1/2 houses a night. That's how much one person is doing. It's a labor of love. But we have some fantastic rock stores in this district, and as you can see from this, their loyalty proves it. Our average head custodian at the elementary level is 20 years of experience. Middle, 19. Intermediate, 20.9. And high school, our biggest, 27 years of experience. I put a few rock stars up there. Paulina Cabell, she's got 35 years of experience, all at Sparks. That's amazing. Letitia Velasquez at Millstead, 34 years. Sophia Avila, 31 years, all at Southmore. And probably one of the biggest rock stars we have, South Houston. And you saw a couple people getting named tonight. They're gonna lean on Ludi, who has 41 years of experience.
Amazing.
All of South Houston High School, which is amazing. Now, pride, purpose, passion, those are, those are things that we all know as a district. Well, one thing in our department that is probably our, one of our greatest assets is another P that you hear about, and it's pivot. It's our ability to pivot. In a district as big as ours, anything and everything can happen. And so at a moment's notice, we gotta be able to pivot, and that's one of our greatest assets. Emergency response, that's, and I'm gonna attribute it to Tom as well, because we collaborate on a lot of things. Of the 9,800 square feet, the 83 square miles, the 1,350 acres, we can kind of revise that whole space in a matter of three to four hours to let you know if the district is ready for school the next day. Now, I know probably a lot of you say, well, hey, can y'all slow that down and put it to about 10 hours so we can get an extra day? It is what it is. Normally, when you say like, oh, that person's a little bit extra, it kind of has that negative context. Well, we are a little extra, but in a sense of all the extra that we get to do. Now, we maintain all the district and everything like that, but there's a bunch of things behind the scenes, because most of the things that we do are behind the scenes. During Hurricane Barrel, 128,000 pounds of branches, trash, everything accumulated, deposited out of the district. Some of the other things, Chevron Bike Donation, we picked up 274 bikes that go to elementary school kids within the district. Burnett Elementary, who has that partnership with Property Brothers, well, that was recently in Expo at Georgia Brown. In a moment's notice, they were given quite a bit of furniture, up to 100,000, free. We dropped everything we were doing, went and picked it up, brought it back to Burnett. Special events, this is event season for us. Chairs, tables, everything. Like you guys see the screens, we see chairs and tables flying around everywhere.
Nice.
That's kind of the thing that we do. But it's one of the labors of love that we do because without those things happening, Vanguard, graduation, field days, all of those events aren't possible, and that's why we do it. Our guys are extremely resourceful. We recently built a running trail, about a quarter of a mile running trail at Roberts. We help out on the extra with the, excuse me, the Invitational, we're huge with that. The golf tournament, all those other things that kind of make us shine, we're a part of that. Now, you guys are probably breathing a little bit easier in the district. We also planted 500 trees across the district, giving you a little bit more oxygen. And all those trees were donated by Trees of Houston, thanks to Troy and Education Foundation. We replaced quite a bit that was damaged over the freeze. Now, yes, a lot of the times, we do, everything that we do is behind the scenes, and these are the folks that make it happen. Right there, what you see, thousands of years of experience. And they definitely make my job easier, and I wanted to make sure to put them up there because you may not see them, but they are there. I want to thank the board because without your support, we can't do the magic that we do. Dr. Lopez, Mr. Fornoff Cabinet, it is a labor of love, but we have a bunch of tools to make that happen. You know, we respond, and it's because of y'all and the support that you give us that we can do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert, Robert number two. We are your biggest fans. You guys are amazing. I can't tell you how many times I get approached about how clean some of our oldest schools are, and they're blown away that that's our oldest schools. Y'all do a phenomenal job. And like I said, we are y'all's biggest fans. Y'all keep doing what you're doing. We're so proud of you. Tom, we gotta change your name to Robert. We can't have just two Roberts.
It's Tom Robert Douglas.
Wait for this to populate. Pivot. Thank you. My name is Tom Douglas. I'm the director, I'm proud to be the Director of the Maintenance Department for Pasadena ISD. We've got a lot of great folks that work there, and I want to take this chance to tell you a little about what we do. So we've got 118 employees, and we take, we maintain over 80 facilities. We receive about 3,700 work orders a year, which averages to about 155 a day. All of the work orders are reviewed by craft supervisors before they hand them to their technicians. The greatest number of work orders that we have are for HVAC issues. We prioritize HVAC work orders by the areas that will take care of the most students. The campuses first, the wings, pods, and then down to the classrooms. Takes a lot to keep this going. We've got, we've got a lockup department with one supervisor and six technicians. They order, track, receive, and distribute parts from over 140 vendors to our staff to keep things going in the district. Our electrical department has one supervisor, 10 electricians, licensed electricians, two licensed apprentices, a one fire alarm technician, and they handle our electrical and fire alarm needs. They also keep 40 elevators and 45 emergency generator systems online. That's electrical generators. Our carpenter department has one supervisor. We've got three carpenters, three painters, three flooring technicians, and six apprentices to keep the flooring system safe and building finishes presentable. The, our carpenters can build just about anything. They repair everything from just minor desk work to build walls, build rooms, build out areas. They can build cabinetry. Our flooring technicians can handle anything, they can handle any type of flooring. They can handle carpet, LVT, VCT, marmolium. They do a lot of smaller installations. Anything large, we generally contract out, but they, they can, they can handle it all. Our Roofing, Refrigeration, and Preventative Maintenance Department has one supervisor, six preventative maintenance technicians, four roofers, six refrigeration technicians. They all work to keep the building exteriors clean, campuses interiors dry, and food service equipment operational. Some of the preventative maintenance also work on HVAC equipment, filters, and cleaning, cleaning some of the equipment. And they are the crews that also, if something breaks down, if we have a flood, we've got dehumidifiers, hydroxy or air scrubbers, fans, and they bring those out to make sure the environment doesn't get moldy or smelly. Our Plumbing and Irrigation Department has one supervisor, seven licensed plumbers, two irrigation technicians, an equipment operator, welder, four apprentices. They keep all of our plumbing, gas, and irrigation systems in good working order. Our HVAC department has one supervisor, 10 HVAC systems technicians, one building automation technician, that's the guy that works on the controls, for all the controls throughout the district, five apprentices, and they, they work to keep the air in our buildings clean and at a comfortable temperature. We've got a mobile maintenance department that has one supervisor, 12 maintenance technicians, one glazer, three apprentices. They take care of the general maintenance repairs. Six of these technicians are staged at the larger campuses, the high schools. Beverly Hills has one because it's a large intermediate. They take care of all those things. We've got three pest control technicians that work to keep, take care of the pests, and the locksmiths work to keep our buildings secure. So all of these guys put together, they keep the district running. I joke with them, I tell them that we're kind of like the men in black. There's a lot of emergencies that come down that are critical to a point that we get resolved, that they get resolved, just in the nick of time. Y'all never hear about it, and that's the way it should be. Some you do hear about, but we stay on those. I do want to take this opportunity to thank the board and anybody that was involved, Kevin, with our new facility. This is our second year in a new facility, and it is huge for morale, but it lets us store materials and just be much more efficient than we were in the old facility, so.
Awesome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hey, Tom. Tom, how many years you got?
Twenty, I'll be 34 years this year. I'll have been Maintenance Director 20 years in about three months, so.
Awesome.
Unbelievable. Thank you.
Right.
Well, you guys are great. Thank you.
Thank you so much. This is the greatest place that I have ever worked, y'all, and I appreciate y'all's support.
We love having.
Great all the way.
Y'all have been great, as have all departments have.
Kevin, fantastic. Thank you. Appreciate it. It's gonna take us to our program spotlight presentation. Good luck, Donna. Follow that.
Well, we're gonna start a little lower. Yeah, when I saw which four gentlemen were in front of me, I was pretty sure we wouldn't be able to keep up with their song and dance. But what I did want to say is we're gonna talk about after-school programs, but one of the things that I've always loved about Pasadena is that everybody takes care of everybody. And there is no way our after-school programs could run the way they do without those four gentlemen in those four departments. I think, like they say, every other job as designed probably has happened in an after-school program. Something has fallen apart, or the weather gave out and everybody was glad we made it to the end of the school day, only it wasn't really the end of the school day. So I just want to say thank you to, she said right when she came up here, if it wasn't for those guys, I'd be in a mess. So I just wanted to say we truly do appreciate you. We truly do love you. The relationships that we've built across the years just speak to the love you have for kids and making sure things happen right. So I just want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart for that. And the custodian at South Houston was there when I was a student. She's still there, and she still asks about me and my family every time I walk through those doors. And Mr. Thibodeau, the one before that, will be honored as Honored Faculty and Staff Member this year for the Alumni Association. So it speaks very well to how we take care of each other. What I'm here to talk to you about today is our after-school programs. They are one department in the Program Support and Achievement Department. They have three people on their staff. So Christina Torres is our ACE Project Director. You just approved, and thank you so much for approving our Program Specialist change. That was because we couldn't get anybody to say yes the way it was. So we're gonna adapt it a little bit, and we've already got some people that we know would be great for the job. So we're excited about that. And she has one secretary. The part that Christina oversees is our Pasadena ACE from the 21st Century Community Learning Center. But we also have a 21st Century Community Center that comes from community in schools. So they host here in Pasadena, but they run at Stafford and all of that. But it still serves our kids. And then also Champions, which is with Kinder Care. They staff their systems as well, but they service our students. So we have three big programs that are district-wide. This is not necessarily everything any campus has going on, but these are our three district-wide programs. At Champions, they are at eight campuses, Burnett, Garfield, Genoa, LF Smith, Moore, South Belt, Lomax, and Malillo, and they serve 200 students. That's primarily, as you can see, the South Belt area. Our Pasadena ACE, and these are federally funded grants that were competitive, so we have a lot of thanks going to our Grant Department for keeping us rolling there. We are on 10 campuses there and serve 1,200 students. And the CIS ACE Program is on four campuses with 380 students. Last year, LF Smith was actually highlighted as one of the premier programs of the year for community in schools. So that was also a wonderful thing to see. The ACE After-School Program, like I said, is federally funded, and it's administered at the state level, even though it's federally funded, and as far as we know, will continue to be federally funded. The primary goal there is to increase grade attendance grades, grade promotion, as well as reduce disciplinary incidents at the middle school, and of course, engage programs, engage families. So our Parent and Family Engagement Program is highly collaborative with this group, and Christian is here today, too. I don't think those two do anything without the other. So we always have our parents and our families working with us. They do a lot of hands-on learning, homework help, sports clubs, and youth development, just whatever the need is on the campus, whatever the campus has said, please work on this after school, our kids need this, or if the families have said something. So I wanted Christina to just talk about a few of the things we do with ACE. Of course, here we have some art. We also have on the right, one of our students at Bobby Shaw won the state-level poster contest for missing children. She is now a national finalist, and we will know in a few weeks whether she won or not. So we will bring her in and celebrate all of that at the next board meeting, and hopefully we'll be able to say she was the national winner. But I wanted Christina to share just a little bit more that they do here in our Pasadena-based program.
I think I'm close enough. I just want to tell you a little bit about our program, but we do serve 1,200 students and families, really have a lot of fun after school, engage kids, keep going. And thank you, gentlemen, because it helps us run three extra hours every single day, keep our kids safe. But a couple things that we do that you see up on the left, that is a partnership with Dinamos. Kids have not done board games a long time. It's all that video stuff. So we're trying to keep that involved in the after-school program. So that is actually a soccer, our kids love soccer here. So they're learning a little bit about STEM, and then they go outside and play. But that is a soccer board game. Little fun in the middle. We do a lot of chalk, a lot of those things kids used to do, at least when I was a kid. So we're trying to bring a lot of those things back in our after-school program. Super fun for our kiddos. And as Donna said, art is a big thing for us. We don't get to do it so much during the day. Do a lot of it after school. We always have fun, but we bring that learning. So it's just a lot of fun for our kids. One of the big things that I'd like to highlight, too, we don't have a picture of it, but if you don't know it, we run a food pantry here at our district. We serve about 300 of our families every two weeks. It's with the cost of groceries and things that have happened last couple of years, it's a huge benefit. a huge benefit, so if you ever want to come out, it's at Deja Valla. Miss Scars is wonderful, gives us a whole portable, and that maintenance department has to fix our ramp every now and then, when we break it, when we bring up that 6,000 pounds of food, but it's a lot of fun, gives our parents what they need. Thanks.
And you'll be receiving a couple invitations to some great big family events coming up in May, so be looking forward to that. The next thing I just wanted to briefly talk about was Champions. This is Kinder Care. The nice thing is they provide discounts for multiple children and for employees. So this is care before, after school. We provide the space, they give us discounts, they even will give up to 100% scholarship if the family is eligible for that. So they do a lot of work to keep our kids safe and in the buildings. They are our partners in education, do some of the same things all the other after-school programs are doing, and are very creative in what they're accomplishing as well. They also do summer, just like ACE, we have some summer options, so that there's always something for kids and for families.
On that Champions, what does it cost for families?
It depends, I'll have to get you the, they have a tiered breakdown, I can get you the tiered breakdown.
Funded, federally funded or state-funded?
No, not at all. I wanted to highlight three things. This is one where we had our kids present at a state conference this fall, so the cheerleaders were there, and much like Dr. Lopez's welcome today, they cheered everyone in to the session. We also hosted two state conferences for ACE, and everyone who was here was just so complimentary of the district and everybody in the building that helped them out so much, and they just said thank you to Pasadena for hosting. So on behalf of all the after-school programs and everything we do for everybody, thank you so much for your ongoing support and help, the board, superintendent, cabinet, and of course, all the departments that keep us running. Thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Donna.
Do we let them slip out too? If they want?
They want.
If you want to slip out, you can, Dr. Lopez says you can.
Except for you, Roberts. You've got emergencies to take care of, take care of them.
Consideration possible approval of the instructional materials and technology allotments, Antiques Certification for the 2025-2026 School Year. Motion by Ms. Sullivan, second by Ms. Gonzalez. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of San Jacinto College Services for the 2025-2026 School Year. Motion by Ms. Sullivan, second by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion?
Board members, this is for GED and ESL courses for our parents. We have a longtime partnership with San Jac, but that's what that's for.
And do they go on the campus, or is this onsite at Pasadena campuses? Do you know which ones?
On-site, is that correct? They come to us, so.
Wow, okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of Texas Education Agency 2024-2025 Learning Acceleration Supports Opportunities Lasso Cycle III Strong Foundations Planning Grant Award in the amount of $200,000. Motion by Mr. Fernandez.
Second.
Second by Ms. Davila. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Heck yeah. Consideration possible approval of the Texas Workforce Commission Camp Code Grant Program and the corresponding agreements in the amount of $52,302.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Davila, second by Ms. Gonzalez, or Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? It's like stereo. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of Clothed by Faith On-Site Closet. Motion by Ms. Sullivan, second by Ms. Gonzalez.
Yes, I was actually fortunate recently to attend a Rotary meeting where Clothed by Faith was doing a presentation, and, and one of the things they do is they do take clothing donations, but they package those, the clothes in such a way that families that receive them feel like that they've just came from a department store shopping. And so they get, you know, even if it's that they need professional clothes, they would get professional clothes and always new socks and underwear, but it's packaged into like a shopping bag, so they actually get to go shopping at Clothed by Faith. And so we hope to have one of these closets on each side of town. We're going to have one at Metter and one at LF Smith. I think it's remarkable for our students, and I know that that's where in the future I will take any of my extra clothes.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval for the Sam Rayburn High School Texan Battalion Army JROTC Leadership Team to travel to Washington DC, June 15th through the 19th, 2025, to compete in the Joint Leadership and Academic Bowl JLAB Championship. Motion by Mr. Fernandez, second by Ms. Sullivan.
Can we confirm the date on that? Is it the 15th through the 19th or the 15th through the 16th? Okay, thank you very much.
First Sergeant for the win.
Do we need to redo that?
I have 15th through the 19th.
It's correct.
Yep. Is there any other discussion?
I just want to point out that this is an all-expense pay trip by the US Army Cadet Command and College Options Foundation. That's pretty amazing, that is an all-pay trip.
And, go ahead.
Great to see that many kids together.
Respectable group of kids and just their honor, respect for the flag, I mean, it was just so beautiful, so thank you for the invitation.
Well done, First Sergeant.
Last act, sir.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Y'all have fun. Brings back some trophies. Consideration possible approval for the Passaic Memorial High School student to travel, one student to travel to New York City, New York, on June 10th through the 12th, 2025, to be honored and recognized at the Scholastic Art and Writing Awards Ceremony at Carnegie Hall for approximately $6,000. Motion by Mr. Kendrick, second by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion.
This is quite an honor. This young man is something else.
Didn't we have someone not too long ago go to this?
Gabriel, do you, we had someone not too long ago do the same thing. You want to come to them, you want to, who, who was the, who was the art teacher with that one?
This is Ms. Nguyen on this one.
In 2021, we had a student from Sam Rayburn High School named Udet Hasso. Teacher was Tara Thompson. So it's a great honor, it's a great opportunity. We're right up there with some of the biggest districts in fine arts in our, in our area, Fort Bend, Katy and all of them, so we're giving them a run for their money, thanks to
Love it.
our awesome teachers and students.
Love it, love it, love it.
Awesome.
No, they're, they're behind us, okay?
They're trying to catch us.
That's right, that's right.
Awesome job, amazing. I already have gotten to seeing your artwork be displayed at a Tazby Conference in San Antonio earlier in the year, and so this is just another amazing honor for you, great job.
Well done.
Fantastic.
Good luck.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval for the J. Frank Dobie High School Speech Debate Qualifying Team Members to travel to national championship events. The National Individual Event Tournament of Champions NIETOC in Kansas City, Missouri, on May 15th through the 19th, 2025, and National Catholic Forensic League NCFL Competition in Chicago, Illinois, on May 23rd through the 26th, 2025, in the amount of $16,000. Motion by Ms. Sullivan, second by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion?
Dobie's longstanding tradition of getting debate to the national championship, great job.
Yes, ma'am. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Student achievements is for information only, which brings us to the policy section. Consideration possible, possible revision of CAA Local Fiscal Management Goals and Objective Financial Ethics. Motion by Ms. Gonzalez, second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible revision of CDA Local Other Revenues Investments. Motion by Mr. Fernandez, second by Mr. Kendrick. Discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible revision of the CE Local Annual Operating Budget. Motion by Mr. Fernandez, second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible deletion of CFC Local Accounting Audits. Motion by Ms. Sullivan, second by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible addition of CQC Local Technology Resources Equipment. Motion by Ms. Sullivan, second by Ms. Davila. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible revision of CY Local Intellectual Property. Motion by Mr. Fernandez, second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible revision of DH Local Employee Standards of Conduct. Motion by Ms. Sullivan, second by Ms. Davila. Discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible revision of EHB Local Curriculum Design Special Programs. Motion by Ms. Sullivan, second by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. The, the number nine item has been removed, has been pulled, no action needed. Consideration possible revision of FFG Local Student Welfare, Child Abuse and Nucleal Act. Motion by Mr. Fernandez, second by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible revision of GKA Local Community Relations Conduct on School Premises. Motion by Ms. Davila, second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Takes us to the financial section. Consideration possible approval of budget amendment for March 2025. Motion by Mr. Fernandez, second by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Operations section. Consideration possible approval of construction contract with Dry Mala Construction Company, Inc., for the 2022 Bond New Williams Elementary School Replacement Project in the amount of $36,104,609. Motion by Mr. Kendrick, second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion?
Mr. President, we have Nate Hutchinson, project executive, and Jacob Augustine are here, and he's the project manager, so thank you guys for being here.
I think we met y'all the other day, didn't we? You.
Yes.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
For Williams, yes, I believe you guys have approved that previously, is that correct, Kevin? Okay. We can get you, if you want another copy of it, we can get it to you.
Kendrick, nope. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. I had a rhythm going. Consideration possible approval of construction contract with Geary Mechanical LP for the 2022 Bond Hydronic Piping Replacement at Burnett and Fraser Elementary Schools Project in the amount of $2,326,662. Motion by Mr. Fernandez, second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of a construction contract with Brown and Root Industrial Services, LLC, for the 2022 Bond Domestic Piping Replacement at South Houston Intermediate School Project in the amount of $1,445,241. Motion by Ms. Sullivan.
Second.
Second by Ms. Davila. Any discussion?
Going to be very invasive work that has to be done over the summer, so. The majority of the work will be, the whole, the whole summer, they'll be working on it.
We've made sure there's not summer school programs at South Houston to make sure that this work can be done.
Kevin, any other discussion? Any more comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of allowance expenditure authorization AEA Number 02 for the 2022 Bond HVAC BAS Replacement BMCS Group One Project at Parkview Intermediate School in the amount of $74,771. Motion by Ms. Sullivan, second by Mr. Fernandez.
No, I believe this is HVAC in there, says plumbing redone, am I correct on that, Kevin?
Any other discussion?
Start on this, Kevin.
Any other discussion? All in, or, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. That's right, you threw me off. Consideration possible approval of allowance expenditure authorization AEA Number 13 for the 2022 Bond New Parks Elementary School Replacement Project in the amount of $85,828. Motion by Ms. Sullivan. Second by Ms. Davila. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of an HVAC Testing and Balancing Services Agreement with National Precision Air LLC for the 2022 Bond New Parks Elementary School Replacement Project in the amount of $66,750. Motion by Mr. Fernandez, second by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion?
What, what is this, Kevin?
We contract with this company, come in after construction is complete, and they test and balance all the, all the air conditioning systems to make sure that we're getting proper, proper systems and operations. Then they, they issue a report, and then the contractor comes back and has to make adjustments.
Typically use this company?
We've used them for years, yes.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Construction updates are for information only. Brings us to the miscellaneous section. The District Vulnerability Assessment Full Report is for information only. Number two, the Announcement Board Training Completion Requirements for the period covered by this announcement, May 1st, 2024 through April 22nd, 2025. Attorney David Hodgins.
Thank you, board members, Mr. President and community. It's my duty and opportunity to share the, the requirements that are outlined in Board Education Rule and State Law with respect to Board Training Completion. Under the State Board of Education Rules, completing required continuing education each year of service is a basic obligation and expectation of any sitting board member of Pasadena ISD. The board president or the board presiding officer are required to announce publicly the name of each member who has completed the required continuing education, has exceeded or has exceeded the required continuing education under rule, or is deficit in meeting the required continuing education requirements. The requirements for training are measured as of the first anniversary date of the trustee's election or appointment, or two-year anniversary of his or her previous training as applicable. There are ten training areas that our board members are required to obtain continuing education. The first is an introduction to the state law of the Texas Education Code. Secondly, is the responsibility of continuing education in the area of local district orientation to our board policies. The third is continuing education with respect to open government, which would also involve the Texans Open Meetings Act. The fourth, fourth area of required training for our board members is with respect to child abuse prevention. The fifth area, because there's ten and I'm halfway there, the fifth area- The fifth area, because there's 10 and I'm halfway there, the fifth area, fifth area is cybersecurity that's required for training for our Board Members. Number six is evaluating and improving student outcomes, our student performance objectives. The seventh is for each legislative year, which will be this year, is legal requirements of training in the area of post-legislative update to the Texas Education Code that will occur after our session completes. The eighth area for required continuing education training by our Board is in the area of school safety. And the ninth area is team building between the Board Members and our Superintendent, our team of eight. And finally, the 10th area of required for continuing education is additional continuing education that may be assigned by State Board Rule or Board Policy. Thank you, Mr. President. That, that completes the mandatory reading for our, our Board and our community.
Thank you, Mr. Hodges.
I believe we were all on the honor roll, too, as a matter of fact, so just want to point that out, you know, on the honor roll, so...
As Board President, I hereby announce the completion of continuing education credits received by the Pasadena Independent School District Board of Trustees for the period covered by this announcement, May 1st, 2024 through April 22nd, 2025. The following information will be reflected in the minutes of this meeting. Hold on to your hats. Introduction to the Texas Education Code. No new Board Members were required to complete this introduction to the Texas Education Code Training for the period covered by this announcement. The Local District Orientation. No new Board Members were required to complete Local District Orientation Training for this period covered by this announcement. The Open Government. No new Board Members were required to compete Open Government Training for the period covered by this announcement. Child Abuse Prevention, Sexual Abuse, Human Trafficking, and Other Maltreatments of Children. The following Board Members have completed this bi- biannual training on child abuse prevention, sexual abuse, human trafficking, and other maltreatments of children for the period covered by this announcement. Ms. Crystal Davila, Mr. Kenny Fernandez, Ms. Paola Gonzalez, Mr. Marshall Kendrick, Casey Phelan, and Ms. Nelda Sullivan. Cybersecurity. The following Board Members have completed the annual training on cybersecurity for the period covered by this announcement. Crystal Davila, Kenny Fernandez, Paola Gonzalez, Marshall Kendrick, Casey Phelan, and Nelda Sullivan. Evaluating and Improving Student Outcomes. The following Board Members have completed this biannual training on evaluation and improving student outcomes. Crystal Davila, Kenny Fernandez, Paola Gonzalez, Marshall Kendrick, Casey Phelan, and Nelda Sullivan. Post-legislative Updates to the Texas Education Code. The following Board Members have completed the biannual training on post-legislative updates to the Texas Education Code for the period covered by this announcement. Crystal Davila, Kenny Fernandez, Paola Gonzalez, Marshall Kendrick, Casey Phelan, and Nelda Sullivan. School Safety.